Good afternoon, I'm Wendy Sims-Motin calling to order the Board of Education Regular Board Meeting, Tuesday, October the 11th. Are there any public comments for closed session?
We can't see you from back there. She's there, we just can't see her.
Okay, thank you. Hearing that there's no public comment for closed session, we will adjourn to closed session to discuss items C1, 2, 3, and 4. Thank you.
Good evening, it is 6:01 and we have concluded a closed session this evening. We did not take any action in closed session. I'm now calling the regular meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified District School Board into order, and now for information about interpretation for the meeting.
Good evening, we have Spanish interpretation available. We have the equipment here in the back and we also have interpretation over Zoom. Muy buenas tardes, tenemos interpretación al español disponible. Tenemos el equipo aquí en la parte trasera de la sala y también tenemos interpretación por medio de Zoom. We also have ASL interpretation. Thank you.
Okay, and now Dr. Maldonado, can you lead us in the flag?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Please raise and face the flag.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencor, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Okay, can you start with the superintendent report?
Yes, thank you so much. And everyone that's in our audience, whether it's on Zoom or in person, will notice that we're all wearing pink today to recognize Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I want to dedicate some of this to my own mother-in-law, Fuzi Tavakoli, who passed away from breast cancer, and my cousin Sandra, who passed away too soon from breast cancer as well. And we know that by wearing pink today, we are observing this time for awareness and it's important for people to know their risk, know how they can lower their risk for breast cancer, know their family history, know when to get a breast cancer screening, and know where to get a breast cancer screening. And we know that the CDC offers some free low-cost screenings for women who qualify. Additionally, just yesterday, we have also Mental Health Awareness Month. It is in May usually, but World Mental Health Day was celebrated on October 10th. Celebrated seems like an odd word to use. And according to World Health Organization, the objective is to raise awareness of mental health issues around the world and to mobilize efforts in support of mental health. As a district, we are proactively sharing materials with our students and staff to showcase resources that they have available to them if they are struggling or know someone who might be. I applaud student leaders that have made this a focal point in our district through their feedback and have provided personally to me as well as to our employees their stories and advocacy so that we can continue to advocate for more resources at all levels, both in our school system and our community, state, and nationally. Yesterday was also Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we want to honor the cultures and histories of the Native American people. This day is centered around reflecting on the tribal roots and tragic stories that hurt, but strengthened their communities. With the Chumash deeply rooted in our community, we continue to be grateful to have access to their land, both while at school and at our homes. Our commitment will continue to be to honor the indigenous legacy in this community by looking at ways to celebrate the culture, learn on how we can better serve that community, and find ways to infuse indigenous education into what we do. I had an opportunity last Thursday, and I want to thank Ms. Emily Libera from Dos Pueblos. Her theater arts students had an open-mic event. I was so moved, I was the only audience member along with the teacher, so it was almost like a private performance. And I was so moved and impressed with every single one of them. They got a chance to play music, do some poetry. And so, we did talk about possibly opening this up, and it turns out that she sent me an invitation. So, on November 10th and 11th at 7:00 p.m., and on November 12th at 2:00 or 7:00 p.m., they will be having an open-mic event, and it's called "The Plot Like Gravy Thickens." So, I invite you to join, students, and I can honestly say it is definitely worth something that you should all spend time to go and do. I'd like to have you pull up our Heroes of the Heart nominees. We continue to get nominees, board members. Let me just pull up my own notes. So, the first nominee is Susana Gutierrez-Guerrero, nominated by Diana. She's in the attendance office at Roosevelt Elementary. Diana said, "I admire her dedication to service the families, always being kind and sweet." And I had a chance to be at Roosevelt myself the first week of school, and this is very indicative of Susana. Next, we have Luisa Figueroa from Monroe Elementary, nominated by Nagin, the office manager. She is always here early and leaves late. She cares for the students and staff. She's always willing to help with a big smile on her face. Lulu is our health assistant. Thank you, Lulu. Next, we have from Washington Elementary, Ms. Kay Cantu, nominated by Iliana, and I think she's here in the audience, I don't know if you knew this. Congratulations. And Iliana said, "Es una excelente maestra, dedicación y pasión a sus estudiantes, le encanta ayudarlos. Si tienen alguna pregunta o si van bajo, los ayuda a ponerse al corriente, es una... Y es una persona encantadora." Did she get that? We'll continue. Next, we have Ben Rudolph from Dos Pueblos High School, nominated by Shelley. He goes far beyond the call of duty and gave her son options that have changed his whole outlook on his school experience, and given our family peace of mind knowing our son has someone looking out for him that clearly cares. Mr. Rudolph rocks. Thank you, Mr. Ben Rudolph. Next, also in the audience, nominated by Alpha Ramirez, our very own Dr. Patricia Madrigal, nominated for her... Dr. Madrigal is a true heroine because she puts forth 150% year-round to provide several ongoing supports, including tutoring, mentoring, summer institutes, summer bridge for eighth graders, scholarships, and parent engagement programs, impacting several hundred students year-round, and truly deserves the honor as our peak madrina. Thank you, Dr. Madrigal. Next, we have from San Marcos High School, Sarah Allers. She was nominated by Janie Thompson, and she teaches students who are brand-new to the country, often accommodating an overflow, and does so with compassion, creativity, and a can-do attitude. She truly represents the heart of San Marcos High School. And I have seen her in action, and this is exactly who she is. Next, we have Primrose Buenaluz from Santa Barbara High School, nominated by Melissa. Prim always goes above and beyond for her students in speech therapy. She works hard to make therapy applicable and fun for each student. Thank you, Prim. And last, we have from our district office, nominated by Rachel, Kim Osburn. Kim went above and beyond to help her family through a difficult time. She organized meetings according to what worked best for us. She checked in on my teen regularly. She coordinated an educational plan between divorced parents fluently and peacefully. She spent many hours evaluating my teen, and ultimately, she discovered the source of their challenges. Thank you to those who have been nominated and to the nominees for also displaying all the great values that we hold true in Santa Barbara Unified as we continue to be #WeAreUnified. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Maldonado. And now we will go to Board Comments and Correspondence. And I thought I would start off with some health facts about breast cancer. I used to work at the hospital, well, Galita Valley and Cottage Hospital, and have worked with women who were being tested and diagnosed. And I wanted to speak in memory of my tia Angelica, my dad's favorite sister, and also my cousin Elvira, who was diagnosed when she first had her children. So, the whole lifetime of her children, she was quite ill with breast cancer, and in honor of two former coworkers that are being treated at this time. Also, one in eight women in the United States will develop breast cancer in their lifetime. In 2022, an estimated 287,500 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in women in the U.S., and an estimated 2,710 men will be diagnosed with breast cancer in the U.S. The importance of early detection and testing cannot be emphasized enough, and certainly awareness with months like this and the stigma sometimes, and I know for the Latino community, of going and getting tested and finding out what you have so that you could start with treatment. So, thank you. I just wanted to go ahead and state that. And Ms. Sims-Motin, would you like to go next?
Yes, thank you, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. And yes, I'm so glad to be on this fierce women panel, in terms of that, just the fierceness here, and just appreciate being able here to also, in honor of my mother, who passed away from breast cancer at 55, no family history of that being in the family. And so, that upped my schedule of having the breast exams, both self and actually with the doctor. It is a scary place, and sometimes it's culturally not to go, you don't have the support there. So, it's really important that if you know someone, go with them. Take their hand, hold their hand, how they're being a part of that as they go through that. That's a really important piece about having someone there with you to go. And I know there's several support groups that are here locally and nationally where you might be able to go. And in addition to that, when my mother was diagnosed, it was also very important to talk about my brothers, since he was so close to her. It was looking at me, so I got tested, didn't have that gene. But also, that test in terms of men, because we tend to not think, it's talked more about women. But it does, as Ms. Munoz just said, it does impact men as well. So, it's important to make sure our men are going and getting their exams from the breast as well. So, I just wanted to share that, and I just absolutely wear the power of this pink in my heart with my mom all the time, and she's always with me. So, if you know me long enough, I'm probably sharing a story she said or something like that. And then I just wanted to say that I had the opportunity to attend some back-to-school nights and the listening sessions, which continue to be very insightful for the action on the ground, and really taking an approach as a board member. What is the involvement as we're listening in terms, does this rise to a policy level and things that we need to do, we might need to advocate? Does it rise to us advocating at the California State Board of Association? So, what is a board, as we're listening to what things may be happening? Some of it that we can take care of, some of it, there's local things that we could do, maybe changing our policy, but really listening very quietly there. I was at Galita Valley Junior High this morning and really appreciated the conversation there, very candid and transparent conversation. And then, I think, because there was a hero in the heart in that room, actually, there was a testimony of someone that was sharing that, so hopefully they'll probably see them pretty soon. So, just want to appreciate that. And then I also attended back-to-school nights at Adams as well as La Cuesta, which is great. You just continue to see that energy. At La Cuesta, we had some good food, so that always invites me, I'm ready to go. So, yeah, so just appreciate all the work that everybody's doing, it's continued. You know, we're being unified in the ways that we're doing, and every effort, as we say, is centered around our students' success and the environment that we're working in, serving in, teaching and learning, and how critical those pieces are. So, thank you, everyone that's here tonight and taking your time and coming to listen, be a part of our board.
Ms. Capes?
Yeah, thank you, thank you both for your comments about breast cancer. I really appreciate what you shared. I wanted to, speaking of correspondence, just thank the community that reached out to us about Yom Kippur and having that be a holiday for staff and students. And I was very struck by the comments and how heartfelt this was, so important to families that they reached out to us. One parent said, "Finally, I got to share this holiest of days with my daughter and have the real contemplation that we needed as a family," and it just really struck me. So, thank you for reaching out, and I'm glad that this is going to be a holiday next year. I understand they put in their comments as well. And then, just a little PSA, you should have your ballots if you registered to vote. So, I hope everybody please votes early, because sometimes it sits on the kitchen counter for a little too long and you miss that opportunity. So, if you have it, put it in any of the ballot drop boxes or your mailbox. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Thank you for being here, and those of you on Zoom, thank you as well. I've had the great privilege of also participating in the Listening Tours at Dos Pueblos High School in San Marcos. And of course, my favorite part is seeing the teachers there, seeing the staff, and getting to know them and listening to their hopes, their aspirations, and their suggestions. So, thank you to all of those who attended. I also went to back-to-school night at McKinley School, and I like to encourage cabinet members and my colleagues to visit McKinley more frequently. It's such a gem in our community. The staff hasn't had a permanent principal this year, and their heart and soul is given to those students. The students want to learn, the staff is happy to be there. And I spoke to some of the teachers there, a lot of them are newer to McKinley, all bilingual, and they said how much they appreciate having district staff there, having board members there, and how they look forward to that. So, that was really heartwarming, so I hope that we can visit McKinley more frequently. So, that was really uplifting for me. In addition to that, of course, all the comments that were made about breast cancer, encouraging people to get checked. I know we're all busy, everybody's super busy, and the first thing to do is, "I'll do it later, I'll do it later," but it might be a little late, so get checked. And thank you for being here.
Ms. Fu.
Thank you, President Munoz. Well, I too would like to draw recognition of my mother, who battled with breast cancer, and I'm really delighted that we have pointed to this and emphasized the importance of awareness and the importance of testing tonight. So, thank you. As is my job, I want to start with our email to the board report, and in the past two weeks, we received over 25 emails to the board. Specific concerns were raised as follows. One, we received six emails for smaller class sizes to continue that they're making such a huge difference in our schools. One concern about the need for more special education para educators. One concern about health education needing to be longer than just nine weeks, especially with the concerns about mental health. And 16 emails in gratitude, deep gratitude for our observance of Yom Kippur. I too have been honored to continue to attend the school listening tours across the district in the last two weeks. I was part of the group that met with staff from San Marcos High School and Santa Barbara Community Academy, and I just want to publicly say thank you for the candor, for their suggestions, and for making us feel so welcome. I also noticed that in the past two weeks, 17 classified employees have been hired and five more substitutes have been hired. And so, just kudos to the HR department. I know they're working really, really hard to fill our vacancies. I also just want to mention that I did attend the Santa Barbara High School All-Class Reunion on October 1st. It was really fun. There were dozens of classes represented from the years, all through the years. The program was really lovely, activities and fun, activities and food were fun, and there were lots and lots of current students who also represented their clubs and their sports, and the new Bossy the Cow was revealed. So, it was very exciting. But as we celebrate so many things in the month of October, I think it is important to remind everyone that today is International Day of the Girl. It was originally sponsored by the United Nations, and as we all probably know, girls and women really had their rights affirmed back in 1979, but discrimination against girls and women continues to undermine their ability to thrive. You may know the history, but I'll just remind you that it was in 2011 that a collective of girls from across the globe got together and petitioned the United Nations to create the International Day of the Girl, focusing on girls' needs. And now, 10 years later, outcomes for girls are improving, but change is slow. It has been particularly slow and not equal for young women and girls who are indigenous, racialized, LGBTQ, living with a disability or of low socioeconomic status. And we all know, even personally, that adolescent girl activists have led some of the most important movements of the last decade, fighting for their rights to be safe from violence, for education, for climate justice, and their right to political representation. Just look to my right, Ms. Cavia. But we're still a long way from equality, so let's remember today especially that girls are still fighting for their rights, and let's make sure they're not fighting alone. Thank you.
Okay, Cavia, our star board member.
Thank you all so much for your comments, and thank you, Board Member, for, that was very sweet of you. I have a few updates to give, but I'm also really excited because today is our first Student Spotlight. So, we'll be hearing from a student besides myself, and I'm really excited to jump into that in a second. So, we had our first Superintendent Advisory Council meeting two weeks ago, and it was really successful. We were able to give some great feedback, and we had some of our cabinet members there to hear from our students, so that was awesome. And I'm looking forward to the next one, which will be next Wednesday. I also want to acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day, which occurred yesterday, and I urge our board to continue acknowledging the unceded land that we are occupying today and continue recognizing the history and legacy of indigenous people in the United States as we continue to do decolonial work. I also want to acknowledge the personal input that I've received from students on having Yom Kippur off. It was a space for them to finally feel included, finally feel accepted and embraced for their religious practices, and it was, to many students, an opportunity for them to spend the day with family and with community, which is really what the festival and holiday is all about. So, I commend the district on taking moves to make sure all religions and all cultural groups feel included and feel like their needs are accounted for as well. And without further ado, I just want to transition into our first Student Spotlight. So, these series are just going to be highlighting some students who are doing important work in our district, and also, you know, give them the opportunity to speak about issues that they are passionate about, so the board can have an opportunity to hear from folks on what change needs to be made. So, without further ado, I'd like to invite the one and only Dawson Kelly.
Thank you, Cavia, for the introduction. Board, Superintendent Maldonado, it's nice to see you all. It's really interesting to be on this side of all of you. So, for those of you who don't know, my name is Dawson Kelly. I'm the former student board member and the current ASP president for San Marcos High School. If I could get my slides up? Okay, perfect. So, I mean, no surprise to any of you, I'm talking about mental health. Pretty typical. This was something that I was passionate about since the beginning of my time on the board, and now that I've taken the time to reflect since being off the board, I have some slides for all of you to highlight the importance of mental health in our system, in our world, and in our overall community. So, next slide, please. So, just some statistics from YouthWell that I found. One in five youth ages 13 to 18 live with a mental health condition. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death for people ages 10 to 24. 50% of adults with a mental health illness experience symptoms by age 14, and 75% emerge by age 24. And as of 2019, Santa Barbara County is ranked 18th out of 58 counties in California for high suicide rates. And then, just from a personal anecdote, I've noticed on a daily basis, high levels of untreated anxiety, depression, eating disorders, and various other mental illnesses. I would say probably every two days, I have a serious conversation with a peer, friend, student in the hallways about mental health and how either their parents aren't understanding, their teachers aren't understanding, they feel alone, and they really are calling out for help. And I think this is something that needs to be addressed within our system for it to change long-term. If you go to the next slide, I have more stats. So, this is from a survey conducted by Harris Poll, a post-COVID-19 survey. Let's say 81% of teens say mental health is a significant issue for young people in the United States. Seven in 10 teens have experienced mental health struggles. And then, as you can see, there's a large percentage of teens that have experienced other disorders. 61% of teens said that COVID-19 pandemic has increased their feeling of loneliness, and 79% of teens wish there was an inclusive environment or space for people in school to talk about mental health. So, I'm not alone in this. That is, four in every five students that are needing this and wanting this. And we just went through a huge global pandemic, and now we are spending, on average, eight hours a day immersed with technology and information and stimuli, and we are neurologically being affected like drugs, essentially. This is having an effect on our brain chemistry how drugs would. So, I think that you, as people in power in our education system, need to implement some sort of practices that can help us deal with these unprecedented times and the toll that is taken on our mental health. I think it needs to be addressed. And if we go to the next slide. The importance of being proactive. A lot of time and money is spent addressing crisis, where if we were to prevent crisis in the first place, then our resources would be used more efficiently. This would be informing students on healthy technology habits, how to build healthy relationships, how to communicate, how to tell when a friend is struggling, how to describe your own emotions, ways to take a break, and self-care, just to name a few. As you all know, education has a ripple effect on our community, and it would be the same with mental health education. If a few students are informed, and ideally, if all students are informed, this will ripple out into our greater community as a whole. We can learn to see when our friends are struggling and then refer them to support. We can act as support groups within our own classrooms, and we all have the education. When we create environments where people can actually talk about mental health in a safe way, then a lot of our problems can be solved with each other and in a community-based model. If we go to the next slide, I have some long-term and short-term goals or services that I'd like in place. So, long-term ideally would be more mental health services on campus, like mental health spaces, more counselors, classroom environments that are designed for all types of learners, like students with ADD, OCD, setting up classrooms where it's easier for them to learn. That could be like standing desks, different types of chairs, certain fidget toys, or other things that would allow them to work with their mental illness and mental struggles. And then, of course, consistent mental health educations in all of our schools. I know there are many different models that I could get into later on if we would like to have those discussions, that we could implement without taking a whole period, but could still be consistent throughout our schools. And then, in the short term, times for classrooms to talk about mental wellness and provide current resources in our communities. So, this could be like to teachers, giving them like five minutes a day, just a prompt or like a resource that they could push out to students or maybe put in their Canvas page, things along those lines. And then, optional assemblies with speakers on wellness-related topics. Maybe we could sponsor certain speakers or educators that could help facilitate this ripple effect and create an environment where mental health is being talked about at schools, and then gather ideas and data from students on how we are doing to address their mental health. I think it's important to get consistent data and reflections from students on how, as a district, we are addressing their mental health needs. So, thank you all for listening to me today. I'm happy to take any questions you have, but yeah, thank you so much. And thank you, Cavia, for inviting me to be the first speaker. Sounds great.
Dawson, I do have a question. First of all, thank you for that wonderful presentation. It's just an extension of what you started here on the board. And as you know, I'm always talking about how important it is when you talked about prevention, the power in prevention, in terms of how can the early care and community help with starting that? I know we have to address the immediate problem right here, but to reduce those longer out terms, how do we work with that early care and mental health for our youngest kids? I know, and maybe we can start to work with First Five as an association, like currently right now, there's a commercial, if you see it, it's First Five California. There's a, I think there's a mother and father and the little boys in a little distress in terms of that. But giving those tools ahead of time, how to work with those so that it doesn't lend itself to the... doesn't get, lend itself to the, to the, to the crisis. How can we prevent that in those early years? So I'd be interested in, as you're gathering this data, how early care can really play a huge part in that, and so that you have tools from the early on to deal with this, because life has those different things. There are certain things that certainly rise up to that crisis level, but can we even start as little as two and three years? How do we help those tools that they can carry on to do that?
Yeah, and I love that idea. I think that would also reduce the stigma in the first place when it's consistently talked about since they're two, before they can even remember for some times, because a lot of stigma starts when we don't talk about things until they're 15, 14, you know, that age. So yeah, consistently and early on. Thank you for that.
Ms. Alvarez?
Dawson, thank you. Thank you very much for all the information. And you mentioned your interactions with other students and some of the concerns that they express. Do, in your personal experience, have you found if students are aware of the services that are offered at the schools? Several schools have counselors, we have services, but I don't know if the students are aware that that is available to them.
Yeah, I would say a vast majority are not, from my experience. I think maybe students in ASB or that are more involved, or that have been in crisis before, are more familiar. But I would say the everyday student would not know. And sometimes even their parents are like, oh, that's not good for you, or like, a lot of the problems that I've seen has also been parents not being educated, and then saying that these resources aren't valid. So it's another thing.
Thank you. So that's definitely an area for us to look into, how we can better communicate what's available. Thank you.
Thank you.
I certainly understand the need for mental health in the schools and areas that are on the campuses that don't have that stigma. You know, come in, welcome, you know, come in, you can be here. Because of that, you know, perception, like, oh my God, I need help, but I don't want to be identified as, as needing that. So I certainly would be interested in anything that we can do as a district to make it more user-friendly for all ages. Because we know that our kids are undergoing stress and anxiety and such. And so, yeah, certainly excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dawson. And I just want to emphasize that what he's saying is, I feel like can't be, like, promoted enough, because what saved me was education. Like, learning that what I was feeling is not how I'm supposed to feel. Like, I'm not supposed to feel so burnt out, so drained, so exhausted. I'm not supposed to, like, you know, wake up every day dreading every single thing. I'm not supposed to hate myself 24/7. And so, learning that that's not the way I'm supposed to live in my classrooms is what saved me. And so I can't emphasize enough that we have to start young, and we have to normalize conversations, but we can't normalize remaining in a state of like, mental health disorder. That should not be normal, and that unfortunately, I feel like, is for a lot of high school students. But kind of to what Board Member Capps was saying, another huge way that we can make a difference is pre-registering to vote. I know it's kind of a segue, but it's huge that we get engaged as teens, and it's huge that we make sure that we are electing people who will put our needs first, and that we are, if we are eligible, voting in favor of what we want to see happen in our community. But again, I want to thank Dawson so much for being vulnerable and speaking on an issue that I think we've all been working on, but you really, you know, put it out there from the very beginning. So thank you so much for that. And I don't necessarily like using the analogy of like, oh, if you get a cut, you would go to the doctor, because I think mental illness comes with a lot more stigma and a lot more, like, I think disparity than we like to acknowledge. But the way that we are taught to stay home if we feel sick, or, you know, take care of ourselves if we feel like some kind of physical symptom going on, a lot of times, we're taught to push through the mental symptoms. And sometimes that pushing through, you know, leads to a breaking point. So I encourage everyone to keep, you know, addressing your own symptoms, monitoring your physical and mental health every single day, and making sure that you take adequate breaks, and that you take adequate rest and time for yourself, so you can, you know, be good to yourself, because at the end of the day, that's what's most important. So thank you, Dawson.
Okay. And I know, Dr. Maldonado, you wanted to comment on something.
Well, I want to thank Dawson also. I have to jump on the thank Dawson bandwagon. And as some of you know, I have a brother who did suffer from mental illness. And I also want to say that Cavia taught me how to take a diet from my cellphone. So the future is in good hands when we have leaders like Cavia and Dawson, and, and thank you for that. We'll continue to work with you and explore other ways. And I know that Ms. Edison was there taking notes, I'm taking notes, because we know that's something that will be worked through with our Student Services team as well. I also failed to mention that last week, or since we last met, I should say, we had a Love of Literacy luncheon, where we were able to help Santa Barbara Ed Foundation raise over $30,000. But I want to personally thank our very own Vice President, Ms. Sims-Moan, who was the emcee of the event. Because we also know that literacy matters for voting, for learning about mental health, for learning about all the things we just talked about today. So thank you, Ms. Sims-Moan, for that event as well. Thanks. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. We will now go to public comments on non-agenda items.
We have two requests to speak. Madam President, Kay Cantu, followed by Ashley Cornelius. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members, Superintendent Maldonado, and district administrative staff. Every child, every chance, every day. That's our motto. It's what we live by. If we want to give every child a chance at learning, then we have to be able to hear them every day. This isn't happening in all classes, and I can tell you why. It's class size. The more students we have in our classrooms, the fewer chances we have to hear their voices every day. I'm here on behalf of the elementary school teachers who are trying to make a difference and pick up the pieces from remote learning. This is a time when we need to be giving every child every chance and every day. But the larger class sizes are making it difficult for us to meet the high social, emotional needs of students coming out of the pandemic. We need fewer students in the classroom in order to deal with the very real trauma and learning loss. I would also like to put in a pitch for reconsidering the district's policy of averaging classes. By averaging 4th through 6th grade, we end up with huge swings of class sizes. I can't tell you how many times we've had 23 students in 4th grades, maybe 26 in the 5th grade, and 33 in 6th grade. I speak from personal experience of having many years of 33 students, while colleagues in 4th grade have 21 or 22. My students miss out on those one-on-one experiences because just not enough time in the day. I've spoken to fellow teachers and researched the optimal number of students to have per elementary class, and I've found that districts that have a cap of 20 to 1 in the K through 3 grades, and 25 to 1 in the 4th through 6th grades, fare better in test scores, student engagement, and teacher satisfaction. By the way, please do not exclude the gate classes from this cap. Very often, they have the highest class sizes on campus. If the district cap ends up being 1 to 25, then it has to be applied to the gate classes, too. So how can we do this? Well, we can do this by looking for some space and hiring more teachers. So let's be creative.
30 seconds.
Be creative with the space. We know that we have schools with declining enrollment. There are many options to do. Let's spend the money where it needs to be spent on more people that can help and hear the children every day, every chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cornelius?
All right. Thank you, Board Members, and Dr. Maldonado, for taking the time to listen to our concerns. My name is Ashley Cornelius. I've been teaching in the district for 17 years, and I'm at Santa Barbara High right now. I want to take the time to emphasize the importance of maintaining small class sizes from the high school teacher perspective. I know that while the budget is being worked on, it might be tempting, when you see how much money it will cost to maintain our low class sizes, to be like, what's a couple more students? What's another three students in every class? It feels like a very small number compared to the vast amount of money it will cost to keep our class sizes low. But those few students make a huge difference in how much time it takes to grade and spend time with them in class. And so as a science teacher, I want to provide you with a concrete example with some numbers. I currently have up to 90 students a day, and when I'm grading an assessment that I want to read in depth and provide feedback for my students, it's going to take me at least three minutes for every student. So that's going to take me three of my planning periods throughout the week to be able to get through that and to provide some good, solid feedback for them. Even adding nine students to my day brings that up to another 30 minutes every week that I would be spending on grading those assessments and giving them feedback. That extra 30 minutes means that I have to make increasingly difficult decisions. Should I grade those assessments, or should I email the counselor of the student who is out in my hallway crying? Do I call the parents of students who have a B so that they can get good feedback and know how they can get to an A? Or do I call home to the parents of students who have a D+ to help them be able to get to a C? Should I try to improve my lesson that I'm going to give the next day? Or should I make sure that I give feedback to the students in a timely manner, so that they can actually make improvements and know what their grade is? So while adding three more students to each class seems like a small number, especially when we're comparing it to the big costs that it takes, that really adds a really significant decisions and moments that are affecting all of my students.
30 seconds.
Grading assessments is just an example of something that's non-negotiable. I have to do that as my job. But that naturally, that naturally pushes in to all the extra things I want to do. I want to be writing letters of recommendations for my students. I want to help them one-on-one during my planning period. I'd like to email the teams of teachers if a student is struggling. That's where all my extra minutes go right now, and in order to make the experience of all of my students better. All right. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you. You could submit that if you have some additional writing, so we can read it out. So, all right. Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Okay, we will go to the acceptance of donations. Board members, do I have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve with gratitude the donations.
And I second with gratitude.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Now we will go to the consent agenda. To approve the items that are considered routine and are not likely to require any discussion, Dr. Maldonado and her staff have recommended that the board approves all the consent agenda items. The board has also had the opportunity to consider and ask questions about these items before tonight. Are there any public comments on these items? No? Okay. Seeing none, Board members or Dr. Maldonado, are there any items on the consent agenda that require more information or such? Ms. Alvarez?
I have a comment on number nine, the contract with Earl Warren. It's great. I'm glad we're doing it. There was interest during the listening tours. They were asking about when this was going to happen, so it'd be great for us to start communicating this to the high schools. They were specifically asking about when the showcase would take place.
I'm looking to Dr. Sheffield. I believe we have sent out the communication through our leadership memo to all leaders for November 9. So yes, that was taken care of.
Oh, great. Thank you.
And we'll put it on the board calendar as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now? There we go. So we are planning on doing a presentation for the next board meeting on the showcase. Information has been sent out with, to the staff, and we are working with the school sites and putting together an amazing presentation for all of you to view. So we want it to be amazing, so we'll be doing it on the 25th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Board members, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, consent agenda passes unanimously. Now we'll move to the action agenda. Number one, the approval of two new job classifications.
Shortstop. He must have been a shortstop.
Good evening, Board President Munoz, Board members. I'm going to go ahead and dominate the action agenda tonight. Thank you very much. This first item is the approval of the two job classifications that I listed for you there. It's a clinical social worker 1 and a clinical social worker 2. If, just to remind you, I think it's been a while since I've brought in a new job description to you, but just to remind you of the process is, each of these new positions and new job descriptions are negotiated with CSEA. Once we go through that process and we get a tentative agreement on what the salary range will be, the different job, essential job functions, et cetera, qualifications and requirements, then we bring that forward to the board for approval. So a lot of work has been done on these two job descriptions already. This is two, two really key points here. One of the positions will be actually placed at San Marcos High School, and that position will take the place of the extra hours that we have currently with FSA serving in that function at San Marcos High School. And then the other position is going to, one of the key features of the other position is going to allow us to do the supervision of, of the clinical supervision of current employees. And previously, we were contracting that out to someone else. And I also have as backup here tonight, Kenya Edison, who can share any details if the board has any other specific questions regarding programming of these two positions. So with that, I'll turn it over to the board for any questions you might have.
Ms. Ford?
Thanks. Just to clarify, how many people are we talking about hiring? Two?
Two.
Thank you.
Ms. Alvarez?
And you mentioned one of these FTEs will be placed at San Marcos. Is that a full-time position?
Do you know if that's eight hours?
Yes.
It's eight hours.
And I noticed the funding says S R 2. When, remember when the SRO decision was made, it was specifically said that it was going to be, a social worker was going to be assigned to San Marcos, and that was going to be part of the general fund? So is this the same thing, or is this different?
I can confirm that this is a clinical social worker that will be placed at San Marcos High School in response to that. Funding source, I'm going to have to ask that. I'm not sure if anyone else has an answer to that around whether it's going to transition over to the general fund or not. I'm, I'm assuming that...
It has to. I just, I want to make sure that it's part of our budget every year. I know we're using S R now, and I want to make sure it continues. Okay.
Just to be clear, can we, we can use S R, and when it runs out, it's going to general fund.
That's, that's what, that's, thank you.
We just wanted to be strategic with our funding with the S R 2, and then it definitely will be transferred to general.
And I totally appreciate that. I just want to make sure that it's a permanent job and that it continues for the San Marcos High School.
Yes.
Thank you.
I, can I just jump in? I will say that we will be probably bringing this back, this position, as we continue to also negotiate the committee of resource deputy, which we've been asked to negotiate for San Marcos. So at some point, we'll coordinate all of that. Just want to make sure that we didn't take it fully away, and that we will be still bringing that back. But we are, this is our between reimagining safety solution.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a question on just connecting these positions or anything that we're talking about mental health to our MTSS. We're how...
Where, how are we connecting that so that every time we're doing things, it's adding on, it's expanding and addressing the issue? If you could address that.
So as we build internal systems to serve our students' needs, so this would be in addition, the supervision piece would be in addition to our current crisis care workers because they also need direct supervision, but it also allows for us to systematize across our whole district, our mental health responses by having someone with this level of credential.
Okay. So as I'm learning and from your presentation, in the MTSS system, we have tier one, two, and three. So how did, so bringing on that help expands the help being in tier one as opposed to tier two and three? Is that...
So it actually does all three tiers because we have the content expertise to build capacity across tier one, which is all kids getting what they need, when they need, from whom they need it. But our tier three is our intensive supports. That's where our crisis care folks come in at. Right now, we have two of those folks across the district and then we partner with our community-based organizations, FSA and Calm, to meet some of those needs. But they also refer to our internal folks. And so we need to really build capacity within our system at all tiers, although as you know, as I said, our focus is tier one for sure this year.
Okay. And then just one more, just a clarification of just tying the data, you know, that Dawson presented today. How does that tier three, that's an intensive, is there a link to that data that he was saying, the level of crisis that our students in correlate to what's, you know, the level of students or the data in the tier three? Is there a correlation there or...
So there is definitely correlation, but remember, one of our high leverage practices of MTSS is using data to guide decisions. So being really intentional about the data we collect, really differentiating between mental health crisis and social emotional dysregulation. And making sure all of the folks in our system can do the same and we're not using crisis overgeneralizing behaviors or underestimating what the needs of students. And so we met with Youth Well Today and partnering with us on our MTSS and being a part of our district leadership team and extended that offer so that we have the content experts in the room as well to connect community resources.
I really appreciate that because I've just been having, you know, conversations in the community about overgeneralizing crisis, right? And how do we do that but not to minimize what's going on? So I really appreciate that's the approach that's taking and also being in the community in several places to be able to share what we're doing through our MTSS to address these issues. We're hoping that the road is, it might be short and narrow anyway to that two and three. We really want to be able to catch early in that sense. So thank you for that. So I think it has been like crisis, overgeneralized in a way that we may be missing things because we think everything is a crisis. We're not having, really developing or using those tools that help us, you know, get there before it's a crisis.
Yeah. And also want to highlight that, that practice of MTSS, that we identify ways for all staff to support wellness for students. And so although it may not rise to a level of a clinical support, how do we ensure that we have safe spaces everywhere and folks understand that when we say building relationships for students, there's some deliverables for us as adults? And so calibrating that in tier one is how we minimize the impact on tier two and three. And we've had conversations with Calm and FSA as well. We meet every month to hear their experiences from the ground so that we now know we do need to calibrate on what we call a crisis and the difference between mental health and social emotional dysregulation.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. It helps me because I was struggling with like, not everything's a crisis, but I didn't want to minimize that or to dismiss that. But there is that difference and how do we then start to lay those things? But it also helps in terms of the mental, early mental health, things that we're addressing as well. And is Youth Well a part of the behavior wellness department?
They're separate, but they do have a community collaborative that also includes BeWell.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you.
Ms. Kels?
Yeah, thank you. Just to build on what Mr. Kelly just said about students not necessarily knowing that these services are there, and I recognize this is, this probably is a site plan of how to get the word out, like that there's a social worker and this is what he or she does and here's a picture. And I don't, you know, I mean, like I'm, it sounds like you have some really motivated students that might help that principal get the word out, but I just, you know, we heard the other couple of meetings ago from Dr. Beckio that there's so many, you know, there's all these psychologists, there's mental health counselors, like we've done so much, I feel like from this perspective, but if it's not being felt by the students, then that's the disconnect that I just would encourage Mr. Kelly's very, you know, thoughtful presentation and his observation backed up by Kavya that, you know, that can be conveyed and I'm sure it will be just, and to be as creative as possible to get the word out, like feeling, again, I'm not going to wordsmith it, but if, you know, describe what a typical, if a student's feeling a certain way or having a certain problem, why should they go, should they go see this social worker? What are they there for? What are their skills? What are their, what are they there to offer? You know, and really make it very real for students.
It's a great opportunity to highlight and to calibrate. One of the things that we are doing is making a team approach to student wellness. So it isn't just a social worker. It's also bringing in our family engagement liaisons. It's also all of our front office staff. And so that's a great opportunity for the campaign of knowledge for our students. So we'll be very intentional in that as well as bringing in our parent component, which is part of our MTSS, is how do we engage with our community, which is our families and our community partners, with a strategic plan that's attached to who's better off because of the work. And so really monitoring, progress monitoring that data. So that was right on time with Dawson presented.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Kavya?
On that note of like access, I just wanted to know at San Marcos, there are like flyers and posters up around campus and on Dos Fellos's website, on their like counseling page, they do have like a wellness section, but the issue is there is, there are so many barriers that you have to go through to, like I can't just get up in class and be like, I'm having an anxiety attack, I need to go. Usually like at first, you have to talk to the teacher. So you have to have the comfortable relationship with the teacher to approach them and say, hey, I'm feeling really anxious right now. And then you have to, you know, undergo like, okay, well, can you like stay in the corner of the classroom because we have a lot of like work to do today? And then you have to like explain, no, I really need to go. And then after that, they'll say, do you need to go to your counselor? Do you need to go to psychologist? Do you need to just like go home? Like they'll ask you where you need to go and then you have to make that decision for yourself. And then after you go there, usually in the hallways, you're stopped and then you're asked, why are you not in class? And you have to explain, I'm having like mental health symptoms right now, I need to go. And then after that, they'll usually say, okay, well, can you try to like sit in the hallway and calm down so you can go back to class because they want to keep you in your like instructional minutes? And then it's a process to get from, hey, like I'm stressed out, I need to leave, I need to take a break to actually being able to do that. So I think part of it is also maybe equipping teachers or just school, like campus staff and faculty in general with like, if a student approaches you and says that they're experiencing some kind of mental health symptoms, always believe, always support, don't, you know, create these barriers of like, let me ask you 15 questions and try to do the, you know, mental health questionnaire in this moment. And then also in terms of the resources that we do have, I know what's available because I'm part of ASB. I've been involved in student leadership and I've also been involved in understanding what resources are available for students. Dawson knows, but like he said, for a lot of students, they don't read those posters. A lot of students, like Dos Fellos students, Isam was telling me, they don't really go on the school website. They don't, you know, sometimes a school psychologist's office is like kind of in the middle of nowhere, like you don't really know where it is. It's not really publicized. It's kind of just like in a corner. So I think part of it is equipping teachers, faculty and staff to, you know, like recognize when a student's having mental health symptoms and allowing them to do what they need to do, whether that be go to the psychologist, whether that be just sit outside and take a breath of fresh air. But then also part of it is making it really clear, like putting it in the morning announcements, putting it, you know, all over campus, like here it is, kind of creating a physical reminder of the office and space that's there for them, but then also having these employees out in like the halls if they can with the kids, just making their presence known on campus instead of them sitting in the office all day. So they're a recognized face on campus. We feel comfortable with them. We have that relationship. And then when I feel like, hey, I think I need something, I can go to their office and check in with them. So that, I just wanted to include a student perspective that there are a lot of barriers and it's not as simple as saying, I need to get help, I need to leave. And I'm saying that as someone who's very privileged with very caring and compassionate teachers who will allow me to take that break, but even then, I have so many people to answer to and I have so many questions to answer to. So just thinking about that.
Ms. Ford? Thank you for the presentation and really thank you for these two positions. Just to piggyback on things that my fellow board members have said, this is really important at San Marcos and I, I can only underscore that at the, at the listening tour, I was struck so deeply by the caring concern that staff members had to, for the need for a social worker. And so I'm hoping not only that we will pass this action item, but that word will get out to the San Marcos staff as soon as possible. Ms. Alvarez?
Dr. Beckio or Ms. Edison, with the assumption that if this passes tonight, what is the timeline in hiring somebody? Have we advertised yet or are you waiting for this to be approved, I imagine?
No, we will post once pending approval tonight. And that just depends on, it really depends on the candidates, how many candidates we get, if we get qualified candidates, once we get them, are they working at another job and how much time do they have to give? So it's really hard to pinpoint down how long that'll take.
But ASAP.
Pardon me?
But ASAP.
But ASAP. ASAP would probably be a month.
In the meantime, are we not using FSA anymore for these services?
Oh, we absolutely are. The need is great and so there's, there's a place for everyone to serve students. And so again, I'll remind you all, students with us are 180 days and they're with Community 365, so we still need to partner to ensure kids are served. And so this is not replacing our FSA supports. This is in addition to.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Board members, do I have a motion?
I move that we, oh, did I...
Yes, you did.
You can say it. I move that we approve the two job descriptions as presented.
Second. Okay. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Passes unanimously. Excellent. Okay. Now we will go to the approval of the contract with Maxim Healthcare.
Thank you very much. And I do want to mention at the outset that this actual item has been a collaboration between Ms. Edison in Student Services Department, myself in HR, and then John Shetler. Both are available tonight. John Shetler and I will be presenting this item to you. I want, I want to start by giving you an HR perspective on this. I gave you some information in last week. I also gave you some information in this board item on the description. What I noticed actually is that the factors were not completely listed in the description. So when it pasted in there, I don't think it had room in the platform to put it all in there. So I wanted to just paint an HR picture of the circumstances that we're under, which I would call them, I've never seen anything like it. And the people sitting in HR that have been in HR a long time have not really ever seen anything like this as well. I would call it in this space of paraeducator, a dire circumstance at this point. And so hence why we, the three of us and others have been working on what kind of solutions can we come up with? We hear it all over the schools with parents, with teachers, paraeducators, that we really need to do something to fill these spaces. So let me just really quickly summarize the factors that, that we're up against and why we're seeing this dire circumstance. We have vacancies in our teaching, particularly our special ed teaching positions, and that's just not ours, but in, in all school districts, that's a trend. What we see happening is some paraeducators moving into those teaching positions. And we're able to do that through some, some ed code stuff and they don't have to be fully credentialed. We as an organization, and again, many other organizations in the state, all across the state, have added general education, paraeducator positions and bilingual paraeducator positions. So that increase in those same level positions compete with our para, our special ed para positions. We've also, you know, it's, it's great that we received such large amounts of money during COVID to help us through that process, but what that also did was it created, it created a situation where all districts were receiving that money and so all districts were opening positions. And so that was a phenomenon we saw that, that we really battled against in HR because if it was just our district getting funding and we were opening positions, no problem. That's a good problem to have. This one was, money was everywhere and positions were everywhere and so that, that was challenging. Our commuting employees, what we saw quite frequently was them taking positions in their community because there were now community positions. School districts everywhere were opening positions, needing employees, and so that was advantageous to them because they obviously save time and money from not having to commute. The labor market has been extremely, in extremely short supply as you've probably heard throughout our community and the nation. And then the great resignation you've heard about, and we definitely have seen more resignations than we've, we've ever seen. I wanted to bring those factors to the forefront because they didn't, number one, make it in the description, but number two, it, I just don't think it's enough to say that, oh, well, there's a great recession or hey, it's challenging right now, there's not a lot of candidates. These are some factors that are, that make those two statements real and what's really happening out there in the, in the job market. So with that, I'm going to also ask John Shetler, he just has a couple items to share about the special ed perspective, then we'll get into our, our ask of the board.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Beckio. I want to add that from a special education perspective, we have seen an increase in the demand for paraeducator positions in our schools since the pandemic hit. We've added about 40 positions since pre-COVID and mainly those are coming from IEP teams supporting students' behavioral needs. So we've heard in lots of different ways how kids have been impacted, but this is another one. And so compounded with the hiring landscape that Dr. Beckio referred to, it's just really a tough space for us and I don't think there's one silver bullet solution to resolve it. So I think we need to look at multiple ways to fill these positions. I would point out that Maxim would not be our only agency that we're partnering with. We have two current contracts with Star of California and with California Psych Care. They are also providing folks to fill paraeducator positions in special ed. There are some key differences with our contract with California Psych Care, Star of California, and this potential one with Maxim. Those other agencies are providing behavior aids who already are working in many cases in homes with families and have training and background in special education and working with kids with disabilities. Maxim is doing a lot of the same recruitment that we're doing to grab people who have an interest in getting into special education classrooms, many for the first time. And so it is a different sort of profile of employee that we're recruiting through Maxim, but Maxim also has given us a way to bring those folks into our organization long-term. So our contract with them has language that allows us to hire those folks on with no fee attached to that, once they've worked for us a certain number of hours. For most paraeducators, that's about three-fourths of a school year if they've worked under Maxim's contract for that amount of time. We buy them out at no cost if we want to hire them directly. So we're building our internal capacity by doing that. The third thing that I would add is we put a not to exceed amount for $500,000 on this item, which is mainly offset by the classified salaries that we're not able to use and we can't fill positions. But that also is reflective of 15 individuals that Maxim can deploy into our schools right away and that if we were able to get more folks through Maxim, we can come back at a future time and request additional funds to increase that contract. So that could happen. I would remind the board that we've worked with them before and in 2019, we had 47 paraeducators through Maxim in our district. Many of those folks are still working with us today as district employees. So I just want to point out, it's not an either or when it comes to other agencies or in recruiting folks directly to hire. I think we need to have multiple approaches. And with that, Dr. Beckio and I welcome any questions from the board.
Okay. Ms. Alvarez?
Thank you both for the great explanation. Thank you for the board backup. That's really helpful. Also during the listening tours, this also came up as a concern from our classified staff and our teaching staff, which really highlights their care and their interest in student well-being. They were so concerned about providing the services to students. So I thank you for looking at different ways to fill this need, being that it's so difficult to hire permanent staff at the moment. So thank you.
Ms. Ford? Thank you. I too just want to share my gratitude because of the need being so great and your creative, thoughtful problem solving on this need has, means a lot to me. I'm really appreciative of building internal capacity. That was an issue that we had in the past and it seems like that's been addressed with Maxim and between, and the district. So wonderful. I love the idea that we are addressing the immediate need tonight, but we could be addressing I love the idea that we are addressing the immediate need tonight, but we could be addressing a future need and more, help from Maxim in the future. And also, I'm not sure if either of you mentioned it, but I do think it's very important that you are making the recommendation that the HR specialist sit with special ed and actually just focus 100% on this need. I think that's a key, and it's really important, so thanks.
Okay, Board members, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the contract to provide paraprofessional support as presented. Thank you.
And seconded.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Okay, thank you, passes unanimously. And we will go to the discussion agenda, report on the sale of the bonds by Business Services. I know. $53 million. $53 million. I'm sorry, yes, we're going to go ahead and take a break? Oh, okay, okay, apologies, go ahead.
Okay, good. Good evening, Board members, and Dr. Maldonado. Tonight, I come with a joyful presentation regarding the bond sales. I invited our wonderful financial advisor from KNN, Danielle Aruda, to be here and answer any questions that we might have, or you might have, especially the technical questions. I leave those to her. We had been preparing for this moment since July, at which time we have been talking about selling the last little bit, little $53 million bit, of the bond sales for Measure I and Measure J, both of them. And finally, on September 28th, our bonds went to markets. We were warned that it might be a tough time to sell. The markets are very volatile right now, because the Fed recently raised the interest rates to help combat inflation, and that it could be a nail-biting experience. But what an exciting day it was. Next slide, please. So, wow, did we have strong investor love. In two hours, all of the bonds were sold for both Measure I and Measure J. We needed to sell $53 million worth of bonds, no small number, but in the end, we sold $307 million worth of bonds. That's an oversell of 5.8 times in the aggregate. And because of this significant investor demand, our overall pricing was improved. The actual cost of issuing the bonds, or what they say, the aggregate true interest cost, was only 3.99%. Our credit rating by Moody's, the AA1, contributed to the great sale during tumultuous market conditions. Next slide, please. So our Moody's rating is AA1, and one of the things, well, a couple of the reasons that we were given such a great credit rating was, one, was the fact that we are a community-funded district. Number two was that our healthy financial position due to prudent fiscal management, due to great leadership, and due to our high reserves. And then the final one was the fact that our community provides a very strong tax base. We live in a great place, surrounded by great people. Next slide, please. So on the day of the sale, I got to tell you that this was an amazing moment, so much fun. This is the graph that shows how the day went. Two hours, how quickly this happened. So the top part of this slide is the part that's in blue. That's our Measure I bonds, what we needed to sell 35 million. And you can kind of see just barely that little yellow line across the bottom of those bond sales. And all the blue that's above it was all the oversell. So especially right there in the middle, the 10-year maturity, we ended up selling that one 15.7 times over what we needed to sell. And then, so then down in the bottom, the green section, that's the Measure J bonds, and they also all oversold. And it was fun to watch that in my office. I brought in people from the district, from HR, from purchasing, from facilities, from everywhere. Come watch this, because this is us watching our community show us how much they care. This is how much our investors love Santa Barbara Unified, and it was really, really a great thing to watch, to witness. Next slide, please. So this is kind of the way it works out now. So the tax rate for Measure I is now estimated to be $10.83 per 100,000 of assessed property value. What does all that mean? It means that property owners will see an addition on their annual property tax bill to pay back these bonds. An example is if a property is assessed at $1 million, the total added to the bill will be $108.30 for the year. So that's kind of how every property owner will see different values, depending on how much their assessed property value is. Okay, next slide, please. So for Measure J, it's a similar kind of ideal, so it's $12.06 as an estimate per 100,000. So again, if you had $1 million for your assessed value on your property, you'll see an additional $120.60 for the year. So that's it, but thank you, and I really enjoyed being able to give you this happy news, and I look forward to completing all the amazing projects that we're going to be able to do now that we have these bond funds, and to really make our school sites better places. Anybody have any, if you have any questions, and also Danielle is here to help us if you do.
I just, just for the public might think, because the happiness and joy that we're showing, the overselling, did that mean we got more than the $53 million we were looking for, or just, what does it, just to be clear, because that might be an expectation?
Yes, so what that means is we got our $53 million that we were asking for, but because there's so much more, it actually brings the cost of, that we have to pay in, just the cost of actually doing the bond down, reduces those.
Thank you.
Kim, I might just jump in here for just a moment, just to put some real numbers behind it. When we first began the process, before investors were able to actually place their orders, we were looking at a true interest cost, or TIC, of four basis points higher than what was actually finalized. So because of that strong investor demand, we were able to work with the underwriter to lower the overall interest rates and yields, which resulted in a lower cost of funds to the district. So a tremendous job by the district in keeping its AA1 rating, and wonderful job by district staff. They were stellar in that rating meeting, and I think were a huge contributing factor to the confirmation of the district's rate, I'm sorry, district's credit.
Credit rating.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Danielle.
Okay, Ms. Ford?
Thank you, yes, congratulations to your team. Nice job. Very proud. To confirm, just what I think I saw on the two tables is that this is a one-time raise, and then for how many years it stays the same rate?
Right, so how many years is that, Danielle? Let's see.
Yeah, absolutely. So what we've depicted on those various graphs is the debt service. So the final maturity of both Series C bonds for both measures is only 19 years. So final maturity will be in 2041, at which point, we have a level tax rate of about $10.83 for Measure I, and then pretty much a level tax rate of $12.06 for Measure J. There is some additional debt service related to prior bonds, the Series B bonds that were issued. So overall, both measures will come to maturity in August of 2044. The one huge point here, though, is those yellow lines for each of the bar graphs signify the estimated highest tax rate that was going to be needed to levy for the debt service for these bonds. As you can see in both instances, because of the district's strong investor demand, as well as assessed valuation growth, the district is much lower than those estimates that were provided to the district's constituents back in 2016. So kudos to the district for both the tremendous bond sale, as well as the growth in your overall strong tax base.
Ms. Alvarez?
Thank you, Ms. Stellar, Kim Hernandez, and your team. We really appreciate it. And it really shows our community, the excess value, the strong property tax, the strong base that we have, and the importance of working with a community. And thank you to taxpayers out there for paying that bill, because that helps our facilities, and it fails, of course, improves our education system. So thank you very much for your work, and thank you, KNN, for your partnership also.
Okay, thank you very much. And we'll go ahead and take a 10-minute break at this time, and we'll be right back. Okay, welcome back. We're going to go into the discussion agenda, number two, discussion of racial incidents.
So as the board has requested, we are bringing forth the summary of the reports that have come in on the racial incidence tracker, next slide. And these incidents were tracked between September 23rd through October 6th, was just when this report came through. There were seven racial incidents. Of those seven, three were negative targeting other students based on race. Four of them was inappropriate casual use of the N-word indirectly. And so we had that represented. We had two at elementary school, four at junior high school, and one at the high school level. That is the end of my report. Are there any questions?
What are we doing? In terms of these reports here? I mean, it's a report that tells us this, but what are we doing?
So we're working on district, a district-wide response for school-wide lessons on social awareness, which is, as you know, a core competency of the social-emotional learning, which is self-awareness, self-management. Social awareness is where this empathy and where the competencies that lack, that we're lacking, our students are lacking, that's triggering these behaviors. And so we have, as you know, we have a teacher on special assignment whose sole work is student engagement, and we're meeting with counselors as well to talk about how do we push into every classroom and have classroom lessons across the district at all grade levels, really focusing on social awareness throughout the next couple of months. So that's our first tier.
So are we sharing with our students, sharing back this data with our students, and how important they are to reducing these incidents, how critical they are to this piece?
That is a, that's a good question, and I don't believe we are sharing it in conversation with students. That would be a great strategy to talk age appropriately with students on what these are, so we have not, we have not planned that far ahead.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I'm certainly one voice here, but I think that's an important piece to know, they understand how critical they are to change in the environment, and if you're looking at these numbers, and, you know, not calling anyone out, but we, as a district, we have seven racial incidents across four schools. How do we hope to learn from this and reduce that to coming to zero?
Absolutely.
You know, something to look, to look forward to, as opposed to, here's what's happening in terms of just reporting, just doing a little bit more, getting the students more involved in the reporting of the numbers.
So we're, we will use this data to guide decisions, and we will definitely add that as a step in the process. How do we communicate this back to students?
Because I would, I would say that I would, we would treat this as a crisis as well. So I think to raise it to that level of, you know, again, as we're talking to students about crisis, what, you know, elevates to a crisis, whatever, I think this is a crisis here. And I think the fact that we still report them, that's, we're in a crisis mode of that, how we handle it, and I don't want to overuse the word crisis, but I think this is relevant for this moment, but then how do we use this moment through our MTS, through all those systems that we're creating, how do we start to address this as well?
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
And our other practice is making sure that the adults feel comfortable addressing it, right, that we don't fall on deaf ears, but everyone has the skill set to address it in the moment, yeah.
Appreciate that, thank you.
I just had a quick question, so, or I guess two. How are these being reported? And then what are we classifying as racial incidents? Like, is there a specific criteria, or is it like up to the individual?
So they're being reported by admin, and the definition was calibrated across all school sites and principals, and we're not just going by intent but impact. So it had a negative impact on another student, and the content of it was racially motivated. And so that's how they're being tracked, and that's where they're being identified at, using that shared understanding of the definition.
Thank you.
Ms. Ford?
Thanks. I too know I'm only one voice, but I would really love to know the data in terms of how it relates to all the data, and so to see the trends and to see where the impact really is, I'm wondering if there's a possibility to create some sort of a table that would keep track of it from board meeting to board meeting, and also keep track of it at least by grade level, maybe we're seeing it at more grade, specific grade levels, and also the types of incidents. I'd like to see if there's a trend there. The only worth this has for me, of course, is to figure out how to get rid of it as soon as possible, and that would be to understand the trends. Thanks.
Yes, I can bring that back.
And can I just add, also, go ahead, Ms. Alvarez, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm also interested in, there's seven incidents. Are there by seven different students? Do we have repeat students that, so the reports that you bring to us at every board meeting, are we seeing a trend that is the same students, or are this different students that are, might be using the inappropriate language? And you talk about intent and impact, which is great. Also, I'm interested in finding out, what are we doing as far as the intent, how are we helping the students who are, who are doing what they're not supposed to be doing? So I'm interested in that as well.
So what I can do is add in that data as a graph, what the responses are, because the responses are happening to these, you guys are getting wrong numbers.
Yes.
These are seven individual cases, these are not repeat students, these are students individually each time. And so the sites are responding age appropriately, whether that's teaching, what the expectation is, knowing what the harm is in the words, referring to counselors, having parent conferences, helping students to understand why the not. But again, this is, this is a system issue, so we need a system response. And so we're working on that system response with school-wide lessons, so that we can get in front of and teach and have students help each other, instead of adults having to manage all behaviors. Because that is a core competence, and we want kids to be able to manage themselves and know what's appropriate and make responsible decisions, which are SEO competencies.
Thank you, yes, that would be great, if you can include that in your data, the response, and also, you know, are we teaching kindness school-wide, right? So, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I just wanted to add, will this data be part of the climate survey? Are we getting that, be a part of that time survey that we'll be sharing with them?
We absolutely can share this data with them.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there are no more questions, thank you so much, Ms. Edison. Okay, we will go to item number three, filling the board seat vacancy.
Actually, Steve and I didn't decide which one of us is going to do this part. But as you can see that, and we discussed at the last meeting, that we were going to bring you the process items for this filling the seat, the vacated, the upcoming vacated seat. So we have the candidate application form. Sorry, the screen on my side is turned off. So Board members, we hope you had a chance to review it, but are there any questions on the candidate application form? Are you good with the questions that we presented? This is the This is an interactive presentation. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, on, oh, no, it's up now, I guess. No?
No, that's not the one.
That's the JD. What is that? Okay, anyways. So on the candidate application form, it asks number of years residing in the district. I think that needs to be more clear, especially now that we're doing district elections. So people might be confused as far as what that means. Does that mean, and since this is going to be in a large, anybody who lives anywhere in Santa Barbara, Guelita, may apply. So I would clarify that. How many of years residing, you mean in the community? And what do you mean by district?
Okay, so we will clarify what we mean by this one. Within the district's boundaries, perhaps would be a better way to say that?
Probably. I would say the district attendance boundaries.
Within SBUSD attendance boundaries. Okay, we can make that change.
And then, do you have prior experience serving on a governing board, specifically a school district board? Is that any board? Or do you only want them to talk about school district board?
I assume that's a question for your colleagues. So I will take notes.
Yeah.
I would say any board.
Yeah, I agree with that. So that's one thing, and then?
So, oh, Ms. Ford, you want to?
Yeah, I've had experience with advisory boards, too. They're very similar and can really prepare you for this kind of work, too. So I'd say governing or advising, advisory board.
Okay. So any governing or advisory board?
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on that one?
Not on that one. I was going to go to the next one.
Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
So where it says, have you worked on any school committees or participated? I would ask, are they currently as well? So you may have worked, but are you currently working on, you know, any school committees?
Okay. So have you worked on and are currently working on any school committees? Okay? Any, go ahead.
And what was the thinking behind, why do we need to know if, what schools their children attend? How is that relevant?
Well, I think since we're asking if their children attend district schools, for me, that question would be, you know, good to know just which schools they attend. Are they in a charter school? Are they in an elementary or high school? Kind of a general question. Any other suggestions?
I was wondering, what was the thinking behind that?
Any other, Kavya?
I don't know if this is for like an interviewer. Is it possible to ask them, like, what do you think the role that the student serving on the board is? Like, I want to kind of know what their dynamic with me and with the other students would be. So I don't know if that's only for the application or for the interview, but I feel like it would be worth asking, like, the value that they see in student voice or the relationship they envision having with the student board member.
I'm looking around the days. I don't see any opposition. So can you say the question again, Kavya, that you're proposing? What do you think of the student role or the student board member role?
Yeah, I think it was for the, they said the interview. It would be a better question for the interview. But what do you think the role of the student board member is? And what do you envision your relationship with the student board member being like?
Got it. So we're hearing?
If you wanted to include it here, I think maybe something to student voice that's a little more general, maybe could be good for the application. Just, you know, do you have any ideas or thoughts about student elevating voices of students? Or something that gets to the general value of why we have a student board member? Again, I don't know. We run the risk of making this very long to both write and also for you all to review.
But I feel like part of the reason our board is so special is because of that student voice that's consistently there. I think it's important to make sure that whoever, you know, is applying recognizes that this is an integral part of our board. And it's something that we want to continue promoting.
I mean, I'm okay with that.
Am I getting consensus? Yes, we can go ahead and add that.
Maybe we can wordsmith it to make it more sense.
Something about student voice?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to add in here a question because, you know, as I spoke when we started going to districts, wanted to make sure that there is some candidate training. I really wanted to mandate that, but we're kind of close to the 60-day piece, so we can't do that. But I'd like to see it in these questions. What candidate training did you attend? Or did you attend any candidate training? Then they can explain. Because I think it's so critical in terms of getting a firm understanding of what this board does. I mean, just simply how the school district works, how school funding works, those different things that you get in training. And that gives you the context from you. And then, you know, once you're here and we go to the actual CESBA training, that just further affirms that. But to have that initial understanding is really, really crucial. And I think our district and our students certainly deserve us to be the most informed that we can be. So how we can put that in there? Because that would be certainly something I would be looking for.
I will add that. Ms. Alvarez, and then Ms. Ford?
When you're ready to transition to the notice for publication, I have a couple of comments on that.
Okay. Ms. Ford, did you have one for the questions for the interview?
I do. I, at the risk of my tendency to micromanage stuff like this, I just would like to suggest that the actual application could be shorter. And some of these questions could go onto the interview. Because I think the application is the process of trying to find out if someone's eligible for the role. And then you can dive deeper with some of these questions in the interview. And maybe to Ms. Alvarez's point, we have said in our governance handbook that prospective candidates will be given all relevant information about the district. So in a sense, I don't think we need the questions like six and seven and maybe even eight, which are a little bit like quizzes. Because if, we've said in our governance handbook, the answers to six, seven, and eight. Does that make sense?
Yes, I hear what you're saying. I want to see.
So anyway, I would just say, think about all, think about those comments.
Well, it's a voice decision. So if you're proposing that we take them out and we use them in a different way or that we handle that differently, I'd like to hear from others. I think this is the purpose of the, addressing the questions in the process.
When I saw this, the first thing I thought is way too long. And when I was reading the question, it seemed more for an interview than an application. So I would be in favor of removing some of those questions, like six, seven, and eight. And those, to me, those are more for the interview than for the application. Because also, I don't want to discourage people from applying.
Okay. Anybody opposed to that?
Wouldn't you say discouraging people from applying because of the length of it or the question?
Yeah, it's the length. I mean, like I said, and I'm really familiar with this. I've said, I know board, when board members have been assigned, I've been through that process many times. And when I saw this, it just seemed really long.
Yeah, I think, you know, that clarity piece. Because if you look at, I'm just, was just getting ready to ask that. Like, number six, what's the role of the school board in fulfillment of that purpose? What purpose? It's not tying it, just making sure that. So is it really the application? Is the qualif, you're qualifying that? And then the questions, are then further, you know, your answers to the questions are supporting your qualifications? So this application be more about your qualifications. Pull some of those and do it in a separate piece.
Okay, so we'll pull six, seven, eight out and kind of make it more about the candidate's qualifications and interests in the job than it is about the job itself?
Yeah.
Okay? Got it? If not, we'll move on to the next one. You have a question about the notice for publication. And I just want to call out that we do have Austin here from our legal counsel's office because now you're, I think you're asking about this one.
Well, what I'm suggesting is that we make it crystal clear. I think we need to specify, is this term a four-year term? Is this a two-year term? What's the length of the term? Also, to do a little bit of an explanation of the person that will be appointed will be for the remaining of the term. And any future election will be by district. I think, so that whomever applies, they know exactly what it is. So my suggestion is to clarity, clarity, clarity. Where length of the term, and it's, this is being appointed by at-large. And then when this vacancy becomes open at the next cycle, it will be, it will transition to district.
District two.
District two.
Yeah, right.
Very specific. That's my suggestion.
I'm looking at Austin, and he's nodding yes. We got it. We will add that. Good suggestion, Ms. Alvarez. Thank you for that. Great catch on that one. Anything else for the notice?
I don't think it's in the notice. And I can't figure it out. When I was looking at about receiving late applications, is this, is the part? Or is that another?
I think that's in the directions to candidates.
Which one is it? I thought we said we would receive, we wouldn't receive late notices. But then we say, like, further down that we, it can be considered. I'm looking at the wrong one.
On the notice, I'm looking at, it says late applications will not be considered.
Right, but then somewhere else, it talks about?
Could it be in another document, maybe?
It's in these documents. I mean, I'm sorry. I'm not sure. It's about the late something. It seems like then the next sentence in that piece, as I'm trying to pull it up. Yes, somewhere we talk about the late, but then we have, yeah, considered, would not be considered. Then I think the next thing, unless we've moved it out of there.
I'm looking at the process. The, actually, sorry, the memo under background, under provisional appointment. It's stated a little bit different, but it says, "Applications received after the deadline will not be considered." It's the fourth bullet. If you pull up the document called, the memo, Adriana, and it's under provisional appointment, it's the fourth bullet. So that's consistent. Unless you want us to use the same sentence in both places, which we can do.
No, I just thought there was a sentence that was in conflict of that somewhere. I don't know where I saw it.
We'll look for the.
The board reserves the right to waive any irregularities?
Yes, something like that. So.
On the directions to candidates?
Maybe that's it.
So number one, directions to candidate.
Submit an application.
Late applications will not be considered. However, the board reserves the right to waive any other irregularities. Is that what you're speaking to?
Yeah.
You want us to talk more about that?
Yeah, explain, that could might be a little confusing. Because it's, it'll be received late because there was an irregularity or, you know. So it just struck me different like that. Might be a little confusing.
Yeah, I wonder, did that mean like if an application is incomplete? Virginia?
Yeah, I'm too wondering, what does that mean? I would suggest that we make it like when somebody's applying for a job, no late applications will be considered. Only complete applications submitted on time will be considered.
I think it's better we just take it out.
Because if you say irregular, I don't know what that means. What does that mean?
I don't think any of us know, so.
We could just take that one out.
We'll take it out. We'll be uber-clear. No late applications will be considered. And we'll use the same, I know Sandra, and they're taking notes from me. What I'll ask is that we use the same exact sentence in all documents across. Thank you for that catch. Good catch. Completed and on time.
Because, yeah, I'm all about moving it out, making it clear. Because in number six, we were just saying that there is time to file a petition, right, against the process? Am I reading that right?
Here comes Austin. Thank you, Austin.
Yeah.
The petition is a little bit different. That comes later, after you've already made the appointment. And there's a process built into the education code where the appointment can actually be challenged if enough signatures are gathered. So that's kind of a different process.[1616.46]